Good evening, everybody. This is the March nineteenth meeting, twenty twenty-four of the Hoyok City Council. I'm going to recognize Counselor Mike Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to suspend our rules to allow Counselor Bartley to be president for the evening.
Second. Under discussion? Hearing none on the motion, all in favor? Aye. Okay. All right, there's a lot of good ayes here, so thanks a lot. Counselor Murphy Rumbelletti is on Zoom. She asked me to pinch hit, so I will be a pale imitation, but we'll try our best. Let's start with the clerk calling the roll.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Gibner? Graney?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
McGrath Smith?
Here.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Here.
Ocasio?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands
Stay here. Let's get this out of the way. I will take a motion, a motion to take a roll call vote that for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to receive to refer items to committee, remove items on the table, place items on the table, package items together, comply with items, or suspend the rules unless there is an objection.
Second.
So moved.
Under discussion? Hearing none on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Before we get too far afield, I'm going to recognize Counselor Graney.
Yes, Hoyok lost a favorite son this week, and I'd like to take a moment of silence for Raymond Mitchell, who passed away unexpectedly, and condolences to his family, his mom Sandy, who was a retired schoolteacher, and his dad, who was a football coach in Hoyok for many, many years and a Hoyok educator. So please, let's have a moment of silence for Raymond.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a special guest here this evening. This is an order I filed, and we have a beautiful proclamation by our erstwhile clitoric, Counselor Devine. And so I'm going to have my good friend, Ward Six Counselor, shepherd up the Quinn family. And with us, we have Cheryl Quinn, we have Shannon Quinn, and we have Brendan Quinn. And so this is an order I filed relative to Merle Hillman, their family member, who was killed at Pearl Harbor as he was serving our country. He listed in the military in nineteen thirty-seven, so he wasn't even drafted, he did it on his own. And then he was on the USS California, and he perished, and he remained unknown, an unknown soldier in terms of his death for many years until 2011. And then the DNA process started, and then there was a huge lag, and next thing you know, they got a letter last fall, and voila, that turns out to be Merle Hillman. So I'm going to, and I do want to recognize the fact that Counselor Jordan already had a moment, we had a moment of silence, and I was fortunate enough to attend the internment services, which were incredible, along with Counselor Tom, and I think there were several other counselors there, too. And certainly, the mayor was present. So I'm going to turn this over to the family spokesman, if you would, to say a few words, please.
Good evening. On behalf of my family, I just want to thank everybody. This meant a lot to us. Having my uncle Merle home meant a lot, obviously. He was always my idol, growing up, made me want to join the military. So getting him home was just the icing on the cake. I want to thank everybody. Really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Cheryl, Shannon?
Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay. All right, thanks for coming. All right. Oh, Counselor Devine, you got the lucky number today.
Oh, this is like two weeks in a row or three weeks in a row.
Now, I'm going to recognize Counselor Devine in a minute, but let's, we've got, who we got signed up for our public commentary?
Excuse me, Counselor Bartley?
Right here.
I don't think we ever took that roll call because of the members that are online.
It was a voice vote. Do we need to do a roll call as well? Is that what you're saying?
Well, he said roll call, so I was ready to take it, but then if we're just doing a voice vote, that's fine. I just wanted to question it.
Well, Madam Clerk, I don't want to do anything untoward, so you tell me.
I think that, I think you-
Would you like to do a roll call?
I think you all usually do do a roll call vote when there is members online.
Clerk, a call roll.
Okay.
Devine?
Here.
Oh, no, this is for that nonsense about the roll call stuff that we just have to do, because this is-
Yes.
This is America.
Gibner?
Yes.
Graney?
I'm not sure what we're voting on.
Howie, Counselor Graney, this is, we're suspending roles to allow us to have counters on Zoom.
No.
So it's our standard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, excellent. And we will move to- One ninety-two Walnut Street. Turn the mic on and fire away.
One, it's on, right? Okay, thank you. Nathan Chung, one ninety-two Walnut Street. I'd like to address the incident at the February twenty-second City Council meeting. It occurred about nine minutes forty seconds into the recording on YouTube. During public comment, I raised a concern about the proposed CPA reduction language on the ballot being unclear. A counselor raised a point of order to debate what I said. He said these conspiracy theories are lunacy and said it is the law department's responsibility to write the language. Using a point of order was arguably improper because it is for procedural violations, not debates. The claim that it is the law department's responsibility to write the language is questionable since the Assistant City Solicitor later said that the city council controls the language. Whatever the case, the city council is the maker of the order and should be concerned with communicating with them properly clearly. Being a public official is not a license to yell at, insult, or suppress people with whom you disagree. These types of behavior should not be normalized. City Council Rule six E about speaking to people in respectful terms applies to city counselors. I could not find any rule about not naming any city counselor who behaved negatively. Counselor Debbie Bartley from Ward Three is the one I've been talking about. If he has a personal issue with me, we can meet at a public place to discuss. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Spencer Fox Peterson is online. Mr. Peterson?
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Spencer Fox Peterson, fifty-one Portland Street. Just wanted to share with the community and the council that ShotSpotter now has been renamed Sound Thinking, I believe. They, their contract with Chicago has been terminated about a month ago. So Chicago was one of the early adopters of ShotSpotter, and they're finding that it's not worth the investment. It doesn't, it doesn't work. So I know that this is going to be a topic eventually, maybe in this council, maybe the next one. But I want the community to know this is a place for you people concerned about our balance and what we're spending money on. That's a lot of money we can spend on social services and roadways. So that's all I want to share with the community, and I appreciate everybody's time, and see you next time.
Thank you. I think that is it, unless I'm mistaken, but is there, I don't think there's anybody else who wants to speak. I'm going to recognize Counselor Devine.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Bartley. I would like to make a motion to take up an item that was in our last City Council meeting on March sixth, twenty twenty-four. That should have been taken up that night, but I was unaware that this needed to be done. So I'd like to take it out of finance, and then we can, I can explain more, and then we can take it up for a vote.
I'll second that motion. Should we be specific of which? Like, do we have the language to the order? So that way, the public would know.
We do.
Thank you.
About that. Perfect. Okay, so this is ordered that there be, and it's hereby appropriated by transfer in FY twenty-four, fifteen thousand dollars even as follows. From the civil engineer line item to auto equipment maintenance overtime, fifteen thousand. So the motion is being seconded. Do we have any discussion, Counselor Devine?
I need to take it out of committee because back on March sixth, I was not aware that this needed to be taken up that night. It was for six new cruisers that need to be equipped with whatever they do to equip police officer, police cars. And so that's why we need to take it out of committee and vote on that tonight.
Okay, so this is going to require a two-thirds vote to remove it from committee. Clerk, a call or roll?
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes. The matter is, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Bacon, yes.
Oh, how we forget Counselor Bacon. Counselor Bacon, I'll tell you why, a very important member of the body. Okay, so we have one nay and twelve ayes. And if I'm wrong in that, Madam Clerk, correct me, please. So the matter is before us. I'm going to refer this back to the Finance Chair, but I just want to point out that Chief Pratt is online. I'm not going to, if the chair wants to suspend the rules, allow him to speak, I'll allow the chair to do that, or any counselor wants to do that, but-
I think, I think that we would like to suspend the rules and have the chief talk.
Okay, motion is being seconded to suspend our rules and allow the chief to speak on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chief?
Aye.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, well, we're waiting.
Okay, I did send a letter along to Jeffrey to distribute to everyone. I just tried to get a lot of the breakdown of what the mechanic actually does for us, how much work he does. The letter to summarize just kind of goes through all his duties and what exactly we need him for and the type of constraints on him. When he was hired, almost five years ago, he was hired with the thought that, and what they told him was he would need to, in order to keep up with our fleet of almost sixty cars, that he would need to perform overtime as well at a rate of about twenty hours a week. They cut that back, maybe a year or two later, back to fourteen hours a week, trying to, you know, balance things out. And it just recently, the line item ran short. This isn't my line item, just so we're clear, this is the DPW's line item. This just happens to be our mechanic that works on our vehicles. We are the only, pretty much the only department that runs twenty-four seven, and the vehicles, you know, there's an array of things that are done. That's why I put the letter together, rather than, you know, trying to go through every single thing. I thought it would be good to lay it all out so you could see the exact amount of work that needs to be done. He is, he works at a rate of about, for overtime, the rate is only, I don't know, thirty-nine dollars an hour, I believe. And if we have to sub it out, if he's not, if he doesn't have the overtime money, we have to send those cars out when they break. Either way, we have to fix them. So then they have to go out to either local places that traditionally charge us a lot more, about eighty-five, and one place is a hundred and sixty-five an hour. So it's certainly more fiscally responsible for us to do it in-house if we can. So I was asked to come and just give some information as to what he actually does. And I'm not sure if Carl is here as well, but it's really his transfer, not mine.
Okay, Chief, thanks for that. Are there any questions for the chief? Counselor Devine?
Yeah, I did speak with Carl, and he's unable to be here tonight. But I thought that the fact that the chief is here would be more beneficial since it really involves the police cars and equipping them with whatever they do need.
Counsel Rivera?
Thank you. I think for me, the question is what, because I still haven't heard what it is that they do, because I'm hearing equipping them with the things that they're needed to be updated, but then I'm hearing repairs. So it's like, what are we paying this person to do? And the other question is for me is, originally, the question was going to be is if this was a civilian position, but since it sounds like it's under DPW, it more than likely is a civilian position. But then that brings me another question as to why this particular item, or this line item is under the DPW budget if it's being paid off for police? So that, that just like, doesn't actually give us a true story as to how much money is being spent towards supporting the police department. But yeah, if you can answer as to what work is actually being done.
That's for you, Chief, so if there's questions you can answer, fire away.
Yep, so as far as, you know, the DPW is in charge of all of the city vehicles, the maintenance of those, not just the police department vehicles, and it's always been under their line item. We have a dedicated police mechanic. I believe the fire department has a dedicated fire mechanic. And then there's, I think, three more, or three more mechanics that work on other city vehicles. And they do work for the DPW as well, like when, during snowstorms and all that other stuff. We have, like I said, sixty vehicles out there. As far as the new vehicles outfitting, that's just one aspect of what creates the overtime. There's also cruisers need to be, got ready for the academy. When we have people in the academy, which we currently do, they have to send one cruiser for every two cadets that has to pass the inspection before. So those cars have to kind of be brought in, gone all through, and ready for the academy, because if they're not, and they don't pass the inspection, then our people don't pass that course, which can cause them not to pass the academy. There are, I mean, countless other things that, you know, we do for repairs, you know, brakes, tires, electrical work. That's why I put it in a big letter, because I kind of went through it all. Our current, I think we have currently, let me look here, about thirteen, fourteen, fifteen cars in the pipe right now to have some type of repair work done. And it also, I don't know what else I can say, the radios, we have to install those. As far as the new cars, as far as what needs to be done when they come to us, I know that, you know, they have to put all the equipment in them, program all the lights.
Mr. Chair? Yeah.
The additional equipment, that kind of stuff. So that's just another aspect. So when those new cars come, that's like a whole thing. And if he's focused on getting those new cars out onto the road, then the other cars kind of back up on us. So if the content, you know-
Chief, I appreciate that, thank you. You don't have to continue. I think for me is, for me, in my professional world, right now, it's actually budget season two as well, and what I have to do, and I'm actually trying to advocate for some new stuff in the next budget, and I have to like literally itemize it and lay it out and present exactly why, detail budget. And for me, I'm not, it's not, it's not equivalent, I guess, right? Because it's not police work, but at the end of the day, we're still managing a budget. And for me, I'm going to end up voting no on this just because there's no explanation. It's going to pass anyways. But for me, I don't know what's going to happen with this fifteen thousand dollars. So I'm just going to vote no, just because it'll probably pass anyways. I hope it does, but just had to make that clear.
Counsel, thank, Counsel Jordan?
Yeah, I just got to support this.
Hold on, Howie, Counsel Jordan's first.
Hey, the first thing I'd like to ask is, why are we talking about this tonight and not in finance? I, I'd like to stop with the first question, which is, why is this an emergency? I mean, everybody's supposed to be using the Finance Committee to have these conversations. I voted to take it out of committee on the presumption that I was going to hear something about how this is an earth-shattering emergency and that this couldn't go to a Finance Committee hearing. So before I get into whether this is a good or bad idea, can somebody explain to me why this isn't coming through committee?
Chief?
Yep. Right now, currently, with the backlog we have, we have like no spare vehicles. We went to the council before, but committee meeting is after the next council meeting. So if we don't bring it up at this council meeting, we have to go to committee tomorrow, and then it's not going to come back to the council for another week. So as this all happens, we're backlogging the repairs more and more and more. So that's really the urgency. We have six brand-new cars here ready to go, but I'm trying to get them out onto the road. But I can't do that because of the backlog of the cars we do have, because I, so it's a constant. This has been going on for a little while. I can't, I don't like to speak on other department heads' budgets, so I'll try not to go there. But at some point, they ran into a shortage in overtime. So now we need this stuff. It's not ready. So if I don't do it through him, I have to do it outside, external, it's going to cost more money.
Counsel Jordan, you want to follow up?
Yeah.
No, hold on. Counsel, oh, yeah, I said Counsel Jordan.
Oh, Jordan, I didn't know who you was.
It sounds like Graney, but not quite.
Sounds like Grené or Graney, I don't know.
Yeah, so Kevin, you got a follow up?
It's a French pronunciation. Hey, Chief, okay, I get the timing, I guess. It sounds like there's some miscommunication going on between you and Carl somehow, because like, stuff like this about a budget running up short like this, this doesn't, this doesn't just come out of the blue. This, you know, we're nine months into the fiscal year at this point. But I guess one of the questions I would want to ask is, you know, we're supposed to have a central garage for a reason. You know, pre-central garage, we had it where the HPD had its own mechanic, not at the central garage. And the whole point, and one of the arguments in favor of central garage was to avoid exactly what we're talking about here, which is that there was supposed to be a pool of mechanics so that when problems happened, there was flex schedules. It was never supposed to be designed to have fourteen to twenty hours of built-in overtime for ex-employee. That was never supposed to be the deal. We're supposed to be cross-training and working on other departments' vehicles, and if your guys are coming up short, maybe the answer is you need an employee and a half. So you should be getting a half employee that's part of the central garage so that you're avoiding the overtime that we're expending here. It's supposed to be a flex schedule. That was the whole point of central garage. Looks like that's not happening. What it sounds like, if I'm listening carefully, is that your guy is working exclusively on yours, no one else is helping, and that your guy has built-in OT, which is great for him, gives him another, you know, thirty, forty grand a year, but that's not in the city's best interest financially. So we need to have a conversation about how central garages work, because we've got a breakdown here, is the way it's out.
Also, I think for a while, they didn't have those full three mechanics, and our mechanic was actually doing work for other city vehicles, helping them more than, you know, as well. So, you know, that was part of it. Now they have the three mechanics. You know, I'll say it, whatever Carl thinks is best, if he wants to give me another half a guy or another guy, I'm not opposed to that, if that's what gets the job done. I just need the cars fixed.
Counsel Jordan, are you set?
If he does it, I don't care.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel Jordan?
I'll wrap up by saying that what we're going to have to examine, and I hope there'll be a follow-up to this, is that, you know, if we let this go through, I don't know what the will of the council is, if there's no other way, and this is an absolute emergency, I have to trust the chief. But we've got to revisit the staffing, because if there's other overtime, maybe the answer is we needed another person in there, or are we not funding, or are we not filling all the positions? Because whenever I hear built-in overtime of twenty hours a week, that's an immediate red flag. That should not be happening. We need to be properly staffed in the central.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Jordan. Counsel Graney?
Yeah, Chief Brett, it's my understanding that this is a fifteen thousand dollar transfer to put six new cruisers on the road?
It's for all the maintenance that we need. The six new cruisers is just a part of that.
How much would it be to get the six new cruisers on the road? To get them fit to, you know, get them fit to roll?
I have no idea the exact hours that that part takes. Now, some of this is done during his regular shift as well. So it's kind of like, this is just what it's been taking him to get our crews. And then you got to understand, while he's working on something, even if he was working on one of the new cruisers, but one of the current cruisers breaks down, he has to stop doing that and work on that one, and go back to the other cruiser. I don't know if we can break it down like that, but-
My interest is to get those cruisers rolling, the new ones, that's what I'm-
Mine, too. Mine, too, definitely.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you. Chief, did you say his rate of pay overtime was forty dollars an hour?
Thirty-nine dollars an hour.
All right, well, I used forty to make my math easy. And fifteen thousand dollars divided by forty is three hundred seventy-seven hours of overtime. So if, in addition to the eight-hour day that he's always working regular, it would take forty-seven more days of working sixteen hours a day. And to say that this is an emergency has to be done in the next two weeks. I don't, you can't put in fifteen thousand-
I don't think all that overtime's just for him. There's four mechanics down there, there's a fire depart, this is their mechanic line item budget. All that I was told was my guy can't work overtime anymore because they don't have any money in the line item. So that they were going to do a transfer, I was asked to show up to talk about what my guy does. As far as the portion that's going just to the police mechanic, I don't know that. It'll depend on what work he does, and that's up to Carl to manage how he wants to do that.
Counsel Yelson?
Yep.
Counsel Devine?
Yeah, just curious, I know with Fire Department, they are specialized in the engines that they have to take care of. For police, do you need a specialized mechanic to not only set up the new patrol cars, but also, say a car breaks down in the middle of the night, what happens then? Do they just park it somewhere and then wait till the mechanic comes in in the morning?
Yes. Or, you know, we can get it towed if it's that serious. Usually, something comes up like a red flag, or, you know, like your warning lights or anything like that. You know, they'll put the car out of service that night, and then the mechanic will look at it in the morning.
And they have to, there are six new cars that they have to equip with lights, radio, all that kind of stuff?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Okay, anyone else? Okay, uh, just so I'm clear, I, this isn't, uh, in, inter-department, no, this is intra-department transfer. So this requires a majority vote of this body. So, uh, if there's no further comments, the clerk make all the roll.
Devine?
Yes.
Point of order, point of order.
Counselor Jordan, point of order.
Reading and a second reading?
Oh, sorry about that.
Make a motion to pass the first reading.
Motion made and second to pass the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading.
And motions made in second to pass the second reading, uh, clerk could call the roll.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
No.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
No.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Nope.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Nine yeas, five neas. Nine yeas, four neas.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With your vote, that passes. Okay, that was an exciting start to the, to the meeting and, uh, maybe we can get to Agenda Item One. But before we do, I just want, I just wanna point out that, uh, it, my, my friend Jeff does have the, the aforementioned letter from the chief, but when it comes in at the, you know, you know, eleventh hour, it's tough. But he's going to email that all out to us, um, forthwith, okay?
Right, thank you.
Just so we're clear, we, we didn't, we didn't actually have the, uh, the letter. And even if I had it, I probably couldn't have gotten to it. Okay, so how about this? Let's get to, uh, Agenda Item One. What do you think? Want to get a motion on that?
Motion, well, I have a question.
Yes, ma, ma.
Actually, I have a correction.
Counselor Devine.
On page three of the minutes, it's, it's Counselor Devine stated that she would have a Finance Committee meeting on March twenty-ninth. That should be March twenty-sixth.
Okay, so I, I, what I'll do is, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll take, uh, Agenda Item One off the table. So, uh, uh, from City Councilor, uh, from City Clerk, uh, Murphy McGee and Admin Assistant, uh, the minutes from the February twentieth, twenty-four meeting, plus a communication for Admin from Admin Assistant Jeff Anderson Burgos. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes except for what I just stated on the change of the date.
Second.
Okay, motion made and second to, uh, to accept, uh, both those communications. Uh, Counselor Devine, are you amending March sixth or February twentieth?
I'm amending where it says Counselor Devine stated she would have a Finance meeting on March twenty-ninth.
No, Roger that, but it, we, we, from what meeting was that from? The March sixth meeting or the February twentieth?
From the minutes of March sixth.
Okay, so we'll, we'll hold off on that one.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion in front of us, uh, to, uh, receive and adopt the minutes from, uh, oh, uh, Counselor Bacon, once he recognized. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to note, um, and appreciate the communication from the Administrative Assistant relative to the minutes of February twentieth and my correction of the public comment where it was said in error that a mailing lied about the exemption language of the CPA law. And I did receive the communication as we all have that they can't amend those minutes. And I just wanted to indicate that I appreciate that fact and also that it is noted in the current minutes for March sixth. Thank you.
Counselor, thank you. Any other counselors? Hearing none, uh, on the motion to receive and adopt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Number two, from City Council, City, oh, I'm gonna call you City Council Brenna for the rest of the nights. From City Clerk Brenna Murphy McGee and Admin Assistant Jeff Anderson Burgos, meeting minutes from March second. Can I get a motion?
Receive and adopt?
Second.
Motion made and second to receive and adopt. Now, we have a one correction as the Finance Chair has mentioned to amend the meeting date.
Yep, for Mar, the March sixth meeting, that we amend that, um, the Finance Committee meeting to talk strictly about the school department and the possibility of buying the, the building across the street, that that be amended from March twenty-ninth to March twenty-sixth at six-thirty.
Uh, motion to amend has been made and seconded. On the motion to amend, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, on the main motion to, uh, accept as amended, any other discussion? Hearing none. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Look at that, two, two, two. Well, we could get a package, uh, for, you know, to suspend rules, uh, possibly from, uh, for three, four, and five. What do you think?
I'll entertain that motion.
Motion, motion being a second to suspend our rules to take up Items Three, Four, and Five. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's number three from Tanya, our City Auditor, Financial Statements. From, number four, from Tanya, a management letter. From Tanya, number five, the Independent Auditor's Report.
Motion to receive and send to Finance.
Motion being second to receive and send to Finance. Under discussion. Hearing none. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Number six, from Alicia Zeller, the, uh, Chair of Community Development. No, op, yeah, Office of Community, OCD, Office of Community Development. This is the FY twenty-four CDBG Allocation Recommendations and Resolution.
Be received and sent to the mayor?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to receive this and send to the mayor. Under discussion. Oh, we have, we, we'll, we'll need a motion to suspend our rules and also take up Agenda Item Seventeen.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded to suspend our rules, take up, uh, Agenda Item Seventeen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number seventeen, the Committee on DGR, to whom was referred an order from Alicia Zeller, Administrator of, of the Office of C, uh, Community Development, FY twenty-four CDBG spreadsheet and proposal book, recommended that the allocation recommendations and the resolution accepting the home funds be adopted. And the DGR Chair is a word for Counselor. Counselor?
Yes.
You have a committee report?
I'm sorry. I'm just pulling up the reframe in my notes. I'm so sorry.
Well, don't apologize, just let us know what happened.
All right. So, um, the first committee report is, we went over the CDBG as a group and had some lively conversations about, um, the different allocations. We had, we were comparing the allocations between, um, the requests at the Office of Community Development, the Citizens Advisory Council, uh, Committee, and the mayor. And, um, yeah, we came up with some recommendations that we had put forward and it balanced out. So, um, we felt pretty confident with our recommendations on that. Did you want me to read all of the amounts we recommended or?
No, no, sorry, we have committee meetings, but, uh, but thank you for that. But does any, does any other council member of the committee want to add or embellish? Okay, so we've got a, a, a motion which, which would be a roll call to refer this, these to the mayor. But we also, uh, strike that, the voice vote that's under the mayor, but we have to have a roll call for the Home Investment Partnership Program. So, um, this has, um, I am just gonna do the Reader's Digest version on this. So, uh, let's, let's do it this way. Why don't we, uh, take the, take the voice vote on, uh, on the motion to refer the recommendations for CDBG to the mayor. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. On the Home Investment Partnership, this is, um, uh, a couple of whereases, but we're gonna skim them. And, uh, the City of Holyoke has been advised by HUD that CDBG entitlement amount for the program year beginning July one is one point two-three million dollars. And the Consortium Home Award is projected to be one point zero-one-nine million dollars. The allocation is divided between the cities of Holyoke, Chickaby, and Westfield. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the City of Holyoke as follows, that the twenty-twenty-four annual plan be adopted, that the aforementioned CDBG and home funds as approximated be accepted, that the mayor and the City of Holyoke be designated as the authorized reps of the city and be directed to act on the city's behalf in connection therewith. Uh, this requires a roll call vote. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk could call the roll.
No, quickly.
Oh, strike that, Madam Clerk. Counselor Grainey?
The allocations to the three cities, is that broken down?
It is. Holyoke, five, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, oh, six, one. Chickaby, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, one, one, six. Westfield, one hundred fifty thr, one hundred fifty-three thousand, eight, seven, seven.
Thank you.
Devine?
Yes.
Further, online?
Sorry.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan? McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm gonna move in west. Okay. Go back to my beginning of this. Okay, Agenda Item Seven. And we have, uh, let's see, from HEDIC, the February one, twenty-twenty-four meeting minutes. A motion to receive would be in order?
So moved.
Motion, a motion to receive is made and seconded, uh, on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Number eight, from the Board of Public Works, Communication Regarding the City Engineer Position.
Motion to receive?
Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded to receive this letter dated March twelfth, uh, from Mary Monahan, the Chair of the Board of Public Works. Any discussion on this?
And send to ordinance, please.
Aha, oh, motion to receive and send to ordinance. Is that, is there a second on that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to receive and send to ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Devine?
Um, not necessarily on this item, but I just wanted to, um, give a big thanks to the DPW Department for all they did after the parade and how they cleaned up the city. Uh, you would never know that there was a parade and all those people on the street because of the hard work they did. And I just wanted to commend them for that.
Here, here. Okay, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none. Uh, on the motion to receive and refer, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We are flying. Uh, oh, number nine, from, this is a regular one, from EverSource, Notification of Applying Herbicides. Uh, a motion to receive?
Motion to receive.
Motion made and seconded to receive. Any discussion? Hearing none. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
From our friends at the Commonwealth of Mass, Department of Environmental Protection, Notice for HWW to Acquire Certain Lands or Rights. Let's see what this is. Okay, this is a, okay, let's see, to, and, and, oh, this is, this is Holyoke going more of Southampton, the Southampton homes. Uh, for public water protection services, said land in question being identified, et cetera, et cetera, as in the former road rear within Manhan Reservoir watershed. So there is a Zoom meeting relative to this on March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, ten AM. And the, um, uh, let's see, the, there's going to be, um, plans are in file at Mass DEP at the Little State House in Springfield, as well as the Southampton Assessor's Office in, on two, two-ten College Highway in Southampton. And comments can be made regarding this acquisition at any time prior to March twenty-seventh at five PM. And is this on the, this is on the city website and the city council page? Should anybody want further notice of this March eighth communication? So, the motions were made.
Motion to receive.
Motion made to receive. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is, it is deemed received. Number eleven, this is a open meeting law complaint form from Steve Suburbos, uh, of Seventeen Glen Street. A motion to receive and refer to the Law Department might be in order? Motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer to the Law Department. Under discussion. Hearing none. Uh, I would say, uh, just if I could amend the motion. Uh, the timing on this is always critical, uh, to me. Uh, so this is received on March nineteenth. It is dated March fifth, but received on March nineteenth. Attorney Bissonnet, ki, once, once received this, what, what's the turnaround?
We, the city has ten days in which to respond, but it can request an extension. As this is the first we're getting it, we will, uh, get that out this week.
Okay, so hopefully the public heard that. So there's a ten-day turnaround time mandated and, but the, the, an extension i, is, if it's reasonably made, it, it'll generally be, uh, generally be, uh, accepted. Any further discussion? Hearing none. No, do we have anybody? I thought, okay. Hearing none on the motion to receive and refer.
Mr. President?
I, I hear a voice.
Jordan is speaking.
Oh, okay.
Who's, who's handling, who's handling the response in the City Council? Is this gonna be, the accusation is made against the council. Is this the council president? Who's handling this with the Law Department? How is that, how is the response in our answer being formulated?
Uh, to be determined, to, to, to be determined, uh, Counselor Jordan. So I, I, we don't have a clear answer on that. We're, we're just receiving this tonight, so. Uh, Mike, will you follow up with, uh, Counselor Jordan relative to that question and maybe expand upon it to the full City Council, please?
Be happy to.
Thank you. Uh, any, any other discussion? Hearing none. Some motions to receive and refer on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, we're, we're getting there. Um, huh, from another Ward Three resident. Uh, boy, this is, Ward Three's fired up today. I like that. Uh, this is from my good friend, um, and my, Steve's also my good friend as well. This is from Melissa LaFond, the Communication Regarding Speed Hump Petition. So I believe in her letter, she said she sent this in at one point, uh, and this would be a motion to receive and refer to the city clerk and then we'd have to proceed. Madam Clerk, did, did you receive, did you, you must have received this communication in twenty-two. Is that, is that a true statement?
Um, the speed hump?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe it's in the, um, ordinance committee still.
Oh, so, okay, so it's in ordinance, okay?
I believe so. I got this closer to like the last meeting, so I can, I can just quickly pull up my notes and let you know in a couple of minutes.
Madam Clerk, you're on point as always. And I just heard from our Admin Assistant, he's got a, a public hearing set up for April tenth at six-thirty?
Yep.
How about this? This, this city's just moving. Okay, so the motion is to, uh, receive and refer this to ordinance, with a copy to the clerk or the other way around. So, uh, so, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we got that one. Uh, okay, petitions. This is a petition from Ty W. Kane for a renewal of a second-hand license at three-eleven High Street in Holyoke. So the motion would be to approve the, the petition so long as he's up to date and see, and this is real estate, yes, personal property, NA, excise, NA. So this is signed by the tax collector and the city treasurer, dated three-thirteen-twenty-four. So the motion would be to, um, to grant the renewal of the second-hand license, unless it's for this discussion, which I'm not seeing any. Clerk could call a roll.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so, uh, poor Jeff had yet another call from, from a, uh, from a, an avid viewer of this meeting and their, their legion. And the, uh, the call is, remind us gently to speak into the microphone. I think most of our voices can be heard pretty well. I'm pretty positive about that. But just make sure that microphones are all right there, okay? So that would be, uh, that'd be great. Okay, now, we're at, uh, okay, this used to be my all-time favorite section of the meeting was the President's Report. Does anybody have anything to say? Uh, does anybody want to announce anything? This is a touch that, uh, Kevin and Todd put in, uh, years ago. Does anybody have any announcements? Marriages, weddings, uh, yeah, births, whatever. Counselor Grainey?
Just quickly commendation.
Just quickly commendations to the Parade Committee. It was an absolutely wonderful show this year, that's all.
Wonderful show. Counselor Devine already recognized on behalf of all of us the hard work of the Public Works Department, so I think we do that. We recognize that. Reset, Mike?
Yeah, and the Race Committee.
And the Race Committee, and, and the Weatherman, and everything else worked very well. I'm just going to point out two very brief things. I'm sure you saw on the news today, something to be able to speak, relative to Mr. Johnston coming to the School Committee on Monday. I'm sure you saw that. So you may or may not want to zoom in or watch on Channel twelve. I want to say the meeting's at six, but I'll happily stand corrected, so that's, that's just something to, to be aware of. On another note, this is, I've been following this, and I just want to point it out. The, the city of Holyoke is, has an RFP that is due on three-thirty-one. Well, what's this for? Looking for sealed proposals for a consultant to assist the city in navigating Cannabis Control Commission regulations. Now, I take, since it's a consultant, this is not set up in ordinance, but it's going to be, there'll be an option to renew for, this is, I think it's for one year, again, I'll stand, yeah, one year, for an option to renew for two years based upon vendor performance. So this is something that we should just keep in mind, that this is happening, they're due, let's see, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, it's a start on three-thirty-one, hold on. Oh, the sealed responses are due by two o'clock today. Oh, let's see who our, well, we'll have to find out who our consultant will be. Hopefully we'll get a communication on this forthwith, so, and that person is going to start March thirty-first. Okay. That's it? Does the actual president have anything to add? I don't see your hand up, do you?
No, I'm good, you're doing great, Counselor.
All right, so let's move on to the Ordinance Committee, number fourteen, the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that the position of crime analyst be created and added to ordinance Schedule A. So the motion would be to pass the first reading, motion made and seconded, Counselor Rivera.
So as mentioned by Chair or Acting President Bartley, so we reviewed this in committee, sent the language, it went back and forth for a little bit, and we settled on the language that we have before you, and there is actually a job description, or at least an outline of what it is for the qualifications. So I would, if there's any other questions or anything else, motion to pass the first reading whenever you guys are ready.
Well, we have, we had the motion forth, but I, under discussion, any further discussion from the makers of the order or anyone who's read this? So we went over in ordinance, but are there any counselors online or in chambers wanting this? Okay, and Counselor Grainey?
What's the pay?
What's the pay? There is a salary range attached, oh, look at this, crime analyst, grade ten, minimum fifty-eight, six eighty, maximum eighty-two, one thirty-five, mid seventy-four, oh seven. Anyone else? On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I got the no. Counselor Rivera?
Okay. Motion to pass the first reading.
Well, that, okay, so the motion that we, what is our order for that? I don't have my notes for that. What's the motion?
Second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading.
No, the motion, yeah.
Motion to pass the second, motion made and seconded, pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made and seconded, the passage should be ordained. So, let's see here, if you are voting yes, you're voting to create this new position of crime analyst. If you vote no, you're voting against it. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Grainey?
No.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Twelve yays, one nay.
With that, you've ordained the crime analyst. Number fifteen, the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order with support, capital with, with support from the city's Veterans Benefit Department, that the city council update its ordinances to provide free municipal parking for veterans that have an official veteran license plate. Recommend that the order be adopted. So the motion is to pass the first reading, motion made and seconded, pass the first reading, Counselor Rivera.
Yes, as the Chair mentioned, or Counselor Bartley mentioned, this is particularly around veterans that have the actual decal on their license plate. They would be able to park in a parking space that would either have a meter or in a garage and not necessarily have to pay, but the understanding is that they have to have the decal on their license plate. So I think for us, it's just informing the public, anyone, that if you would like to take advantage of this, there's benefit, that you'd have to update your license plate to get that decal. But if there's any questions from anyone else on the discussion, I would motion to pass the second reading whenever you're ready.
Any questions, comments? Just from my perspective, I think it's a great order. I'm hopeful that the War Memorial Commission and those who advocate on behalf of Veterans' Benefits will take this and post it all as far and wide as they can, and so just a nice little feature for, for being a veteran. Okay, on the motion to pass the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made and seconded, pass, 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 motion made and seconded, pass the second reading.
Aye.
Under discussion, hearing none, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage, that the order be ordained has been seconded, the clerk will call the roll.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
With that?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Just really, just really quick, Counselor Bartley, I did quickly look at that speed hump petition, and it looks like in our notes that it went to the Ordinance Committee on October eighteenth of twenty twenty-two, and there's no record of it coming back out of committee.
Very efficient on your part, as always. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Number sixteen, the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that a stipend be added to ordinance Salary Schedule C for ten thousand dollars for the duties associated with the Assistant Director of Public Works. It goes on to say, the additional duties Assistant Director, as outlined in City Ordinance Section two-dash-two-three-one, which outlines several responsibilities beyond the engineering tasks assigned, recommend that the order be given leave to withdraw. To the Chair.
Thank you. So this particular order, we have Kelly Curran in from HR Department, and I think the idea, there was, I guess it was a two-pronged approach. This was one of the approaches to help bring in or entertain someone to come in and apply for the position of the several engineers positions, to my understanding, and what the other approach was to actually find a way to raise, increase the salary and by moving it, I think, out of the union that it currently is in, if I'm understanding it correctly. But I think as a committee, what we decided was, because there is something already in play, and there is not someone at, like, that really is going to take the job right now, as we had thought in the beginning, that it would only made sense just to see the other process through and just give a leave to withdraw for right now.
Counselor Devine, is that motion for the ten thousand in finance?
No, it was in ordinance, I guess.
Well, no, to do it, no, I know, I realize that, but is there a transfer, I believe, relative to this in finance? I thought?
Not that I know of.
I thought they said it was.
I think they mentioned something like that.
Well, it is accurate, for some reason, the city engineer is in a, in a union position, which was, that was the first I ever heard of that. But, and per the discussion in ordinance, the DPW Superintendent indicated that there is a person for whom they really think is going to fit the bill, but they have to sweeten the pot a little bit, and that's where, that's where this is coming from. So I think he's got to, he's got to capture it in another way. Is there any other discussion? On the motion, give a leave to withdraw, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, polls none. Okay, we are at the, we did seventeen, and now we are at the Joint Committee of City Council and School Department. Okay, so number eighteen, I don't know if, these are all complied with. Would the Chair like to package these, or you want to do them one by one?
I think we'll go one by one, if that's okay.
Well, then, let's do that, one by one, that gives you more airtime, Kev, we like that. The Committee on, the Joint Committee on City Council School Department, to whom was referred an order from Aaron Linville, Holyoke Public Schools, school rezoning update, recommend that the order been complied with. Mr. Chair?
The Committee Report be received and adopted.
Motion made and seconded, the report be received and adopted, any discussion?
Yes, under discussion briefly, this was introduced to the city council in October of two thousand twenty-two. There's been quite a bit of discussion over that period of time. The Joint Committee, in its first meeting for twenty twenty-four, had an opportunity to briefly review it and got an update. There was a decision point made that we would probably like to have a one-year review from the receiver to discuss with us, you know, in light of the changes, in light of rezoning, in light of the busing changes, you know, be a little reflective as to what was the good and the bad with it all. You know, obviously with any change, there's always comes concerns, but the school department felt very comfortable with their decision, and, and so we're moving forward at this point.
Counselors Jordane and Murphy Rumbelletti, do I have your permission to sign your names to the jacket?
Yes, to all of them.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so is there any further discussion on number eighteen? On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Number nineteen, the Joint Committee, to whom was referred an order from Anthony Soto, Superintendent slash Receiver of HPS, regarding the petition, to petition the Mass Desi to release the city of Holyoke from state receivership, recommend that the order has been complied with. Mr. Chair?
Yes, actually nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one can be packaged together.
Let's, well, I'll accept a motion to suspend our rolls and package nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. Motion made and seconded to do so, on the motion to suspend, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, nineteen, we read twenty, the Joint Committee was referred an order from Jeff Riley, Commissioner of DESE, receipt a petition to end receivership, recommend the order been complied with. Number twenty-one, the Joint Committee, to whom was referred an order from Mayor Garcia, response to Education Commissioner Riley, message on Holyoke Schools receivership, recommend that the order been complied with. Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, the Committee Report was that these all be considered complied with, and I would move that the Committee Reports be received and adopted.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to receive and adopt the Committee Report on all three, under discussion, any further? Counselor Grainey?
I just want to make a comment about the letter from Commissioner Riley. It really didn't say anything, he just kicked the can down the road, that's all. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, briefly, we had a very good discussion. Again, very thankful to Counselor Grainey and to Council President Murphy Rumbelletti for joining me on this committee. We've got some great partners from the School Committee now there, with Counselor Willahen, excuse me, School Committee Member Willahen, School Committee Member LaFevre, School Committee Member Williams, and also School Committee Member Colomore. So we had a very good discussion with the mayor and with Mr. Soto relative to this. They remain convinced that we will get out of receivership sooner rather than later. So I, I kind of put it right out there. I said if we had to do on a scale of one to ten, where one is, we're never getting out of receivership, or it's going to be some long time away, you know, twenty years, or is it a ten, where it's imminent that we could get out of receivership? I was told that on that pendulum, it's closer in the eight, nine scale. They remain very convinced that in the imminent future, we will get these, control of the schools back in some significant manner. I'm very optimistic, the Committee is very optimistic about that, we want to certainly do what we need to do. Again, I remind concerned parents, students, educators, and the community at large, that we have received no specific goalpost, we have received no specific benchmarks relative to if you do X, Y, and Z, you get out of receivership. So it's very difficult to score a touchdown when you don't know where the end zone is. It's, all they'll say is things like, you know, get this better, get that better, it's very nebulous, there is no if you do these set of things and you go over this for any sustainable portion. So it's, it's, you know, it's MCAS scores, you know, is the, is the reason, you know, we deduced that they originally took the schools from us as having been named a level five school system? Well, those haven't improved, and then to some degree, they've actually gotten worse. Having said that, there has been progress in certain areas. But I will tell you that when we posed the question of, but for receivership, this wouldn't have gotten better, there really wasn't anything substantial on that list, that because of receivership, this got better, or this wouldn't have gotten done otherwise. So the state's got a lot of explaining to do after eight years, and they have a lot of continued explaining to do as to how they hold on to this when by any objective measure, using their own benchmark, they still control the reins of local control. Now, having also said that, the default position of any community should be that you control your local schools. It's a fundamental underpinning of the American experience, and therefore tantamount to us being recognized as a real city with a real community, we need to have our local control back. Having said that, that doesn't mean we as a community are looking for no accountability. In fact, I'm all in favor of lots of accountability, but what we collectively believe is, we should be advised, we should be monitored, we should be held accountable, but we should do that under the aegis of local control. And the School Committee members all said the right things, that they're prepared to make tough decisions, to do what they need to do, and that we need to get in to what I would describe as a transition period. That is to say, over the next year, you know, in my opinion, I can't see why we can't get notification some point between now and September from this, from our Boston receivership leadership, that we are getting control back so that theoretically we have control back, say, in September of twenty twenty-five. They need to create the glide path to do that. And so I'm encouraged when I hear things about the new leadership is coming forward and meeting with the School Committee and otherwise, this is a top priority issue for this community. It hangs over us like an albatross. We need to get this back to be considered a serious community in control of its own future.
All right, Counselor Jordane, thank you, Counselor Jordane, thank you very much.
Had a great, had a great meeting, and we look forward to the progress in the days ahead.
Well, as we indicated, Mr. Johnston will be with us Monday. Counselor Grainey?
Just quickly on this issue, we need the absolute support of our state senator and our state representative to lobby for us down in Boston, because every parent in the city of Holyoke wants local control, as, as do we. Thank you. city of Hoyok wants local control, as do we. Thank you.
Okay, well, with that, Counselor Enes Burgos?
I'll be quick.
That's a case of death.
Yes, very quick. So I will state this for the record. The state representative and our senator that represents Hoyok, they're fully behind this. They they want out of receivership just as bad as the city. Thank you.
Wow. Commit the man committed to his comments. I like that.
That's wonderful.
And we've got a lot of snapping going on here. We banned we 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 had banned that we had banned that several years ago, so I'm just asking you for your for your reconsideration. Okay, so we had a good good discussion there. Anybody else? Anybody else online or in the chambers? No. We have a motion to receive each of these. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay, excellent. Number twenty-two, the Joint Committee, very busy committee, to whom was referred an order that someone with a capital S, who is in charge of school buses with a capital S and a capital B, to come in to explain to parents why kids are not getting buses, and if they are ever going to get them. Recommend that the order has been complied with. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I'd make a recommendation from the committee was that this committee report be received and adopted.
Motion made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes.
Counselor Grady?
Just an editorial comment on twenty-two. It's not shul buses, it's school buses.
Well, yeah, there's some typos. That was probably my fault. Counselor Jordan?
Couldn't hear that.
Counselor Jordan?
Yes, we want to spell school right on the on the jacket.
Yes, indeed.
First of all, I want to commend Counselor Carmen Acasio for once again stepping up and helping out Ward Two. She's right on the ball. She does amazing work volunteering in in her ward to help from everything, from walking schoolchildren to one civic engagement after another. She's already had an extremely impressive three months, and as a new counselor, I could not be more impressed with her. Once again, we discussed this topic in the context of of observations that she's made. We talked about making sure that the path, like we're doing these walking school bus routes, and we know it's really challenging for the schools to stay on top of the cleanliness of, you know, the paths that these children are walking on. Where a school bus cannot be provided due to, you know, fiscal constraints, and they have the geography constraints. We do ask that the school department, when they're walking and they're seeing things, be it needles, be it glass, be it trash, be it other things that they're seeing, that the children have to walk over, walk around on the walking school bus routes. Particularly, we talked about the route going from High Street to Morgan School in particular. We ask that the school department leadership point these things out to the DPW, and that we would ask that Carl and his team react to that. We would also encourage flex squad to get involved with making sure that, you know, those routes are being reviewed so that the the kids are safe. So again, hats off to Carmen Acasio for bringing this to our attention. The overall issue is, you know, we want to get children a school bus whenever possible, but if you have to walk and they have these special arrangements, we want to make sure they're safe. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing is saying none. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Who could be opposed to that? Okay, number twenty-three, the Joint Committee, to whom was referred an order that it review and respond to the receivership response from Commissioner Riley and the Hoyok High and the District Twenty-three, Twenty-four Report Card, the documents attached, recommend that the order has been complied with. Counselor Jordan?
Yes, a motion that the committee report be received and adopted.
Motion made and seconded, the committee report be received and is discussion. Counselor Jordan?
Yes, we already covered the first half of this order already under the receivership discussion. Just going to briefly talk about the second half. You know, obviously, I myself am a parent of Hoyok Public School children. I currently have one at the high school. Obviously, I had two recently graduate from the high school. You know, there's a lot to be concerned about with the current report cards that you're seeing that come out. I, as a parent, got a copy. I obviously forwarded it there. You know, I I don't want to get too deep into it, but I'll just highlight two items that I think should give all of us pause. One is, we say to ourselves, why are we in the shape that we're in with some of these test scores? Well, you don't need to look too much further than looking at the attendance rates. When you have a majority, a majority of the students at Hoyok High School chronically absent, that is eighteen or more days absent, that's an incredible statistic to me. We've got, as a school district, to get our arms around that. If you're not at school, it's really hard to learn, and if you can't learn, your MCAS score's not going to be too good. So again, our Boston receivership leadership, eight years in control, what is your answer? Half your high school students don't come to school on a regular basis. That's a serious problem. What is your answer? Again, you wanted the keys to the car, drive it. Show us leadership. Show us what your Boston answers are to these conundrums. I personally don't think you have an answer, and in eight years, we have yet to see the answer. So again, I call them out when they want the keys, but then they don't do anything with the keys. So having said that, I point these things out. We had a good discussion. We've got a long way to go. On a on a lesser serious issue than that, but yet talking about a holistic education, I, as a parent, support a liberal arts education for all children. I think it makes us a holistic, well-rounded community and a well-rounded person. I am concerned when I see access to the arts being one-third of the statewide rate that for other school districts and other students at our high school. So either kids are not picking access to the arts, or we're not doing a good enough job selling why you should choose music and art and the instruments and drawing and these other things that make you a well-rounded person. I don't know why, but we need to get to the bottom of that. We need children that are well-rounded and metropolitan and global in their thinking and perspective and creative, and we need to consider what our general education requirements are for graduation at the high school to make sure it includes some degree of arts participation, just like you would have at a college level with Gen Ed requirements. I'm very concerned when I see, you know, seventeen percent actually having arts access. So very concerning, that statistic, and I think they need to do better on that. But other than that, you know, there was a lot in that report to pore over. We we have a lot of work to go, but again, we'll we'll see where it goes. But we did a nice job. The receiver is always, Mr. Soto, very accessible to us. And I also want to say, not every community that's in receivership has the type of relationship that we have with our receiver. We shouldn't just assume that as a for granted. We have a very good relationship with Mr. Soto, and no matter what happens on receivership, I believe we will continue to have a very good relationship with him. He is very accessible to us.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? I'll just point out the stats, just I'm sure we've all read this, but well, here's my favorite line. The percentage of days that students are in attendance. To be in attendance, students must be taught for at least half the day in school. So you're you're attending school, you're you're full-blown if you get there for half the time. Who came up with that stat? That's amazing. That that is, that should just give you pause. So if you're in there for half a day, that counts as you're you're there the whole day. That not amazing? I would just also point out, before I recognize Counselor Vera, I also point out that that chronic absenteeism, yeah, that's that's something that and there's stats here to compare our district to the rest of the Commonwealth. You know, it doesn't really look great on here, certainly with the days. And then if you turn in the back back to this, they'll say that in Fall twenty-one, Desi began reporting information for the low-income students group and no longer reports data for the economically disadvantaged students group. So the numbers are massaged. Is that fair to say? Am I being am I being politically correct? Counselor Vera?
Thank you. I don't disagree with some of the stuff that Counselor Jordan says, some of the stuff that you say. Counselor Bartley has just mentioned, too, with numbers being massaged. I think there's a couple of points, though, that kind of got missed real quick with regards to like special education in general. We have one of the highest rates of special education in students with the special education diagnosis within the district, which kind of plays to the attendance issues too as well. They, for some reason, that's never taken into account when we do this, right? We talk about attendance, but we don't talk about the issues that are we dealing with on a regular basis. The other piece is is that we also have one of the largest homeless populations in the in the state too as well, meaning that the kids don't necessarily live in their house and in a home that's they call home as theirs. They live in shelters, and that they could be in Holy Public Schools tomorrow and get moved to Worcester the next day. So like, I think there is another piece of that to take into account with regards to our MCAS scores and with regards to where where we are as a district. For a while now, it's been that other districts push kids or families that have these type of issues into our district because we provide so many resources to the families that we have. That is a great thing for the families, but overall, when you look at the numbers for the district for us, it doesn't fare well for us, right? One, we don't have a lot of families staying in district. A lot of families are leaving the district, and then we have a lot of families that are coming in district for services in a sense. So the situation that we have is a dynamic one that is actually not necessarily being looked at in that particular eyesight. The way we're being looked at is being compared to any other community as a regular basis with regards to chronic absenteeism, even the communities that don't have homeless problems, that don't have special education issues, or have the issues that they have with low income or just drug-ridden communities in a sense. I don't want to say it that way, but at the end of the day, we're being compared to communities that don't have the same challenges, right? So I guess for me, it's we're doing the best we can where we're at. We should be doing way better. But I think that when we're exploring what are the causes, we have to be real with ourselves and look at what are the issues that we're dealing with as a community as a whole that could be impacting the schools. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Megan McGrath Smith?
I just want to note one last thing around the data that we're talking about. Because we're talking about often MCAS scores, it's important to note that it's not a standards-based exam. It's not like there's a certain number of points, and all students are asked to reach that same number, and thus all districts across the Commonwealth could achieve. It is a scaled test, and you are scaled based on where you fall. Are you at the median, or are you above or below? Fifty percent of schools will be above. Fifty percent will be below. You can guess where we are. And I also work in a district and grew up in a district that is also in the same boat. So until MCAS is restructured to an exam where all districts could be successful, it's impossible for all districts to be successful based on the way they create their own scaled score and the way that there's always going to be forty-nine percent not meeting the quote halfway benchmark. It's impossible.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Counselor Grady?
Unfortunately, the state used the MCAS scores for the takeover, which they never should have.
Ollie, your mic?
I said unfortunately, the state used the MCAS scores for the takeover, and I was at the meeting when they voted seven to two to do it, and the two dissenting votes to not take away the the local control were the two members of the State Department of Education who had visited and had been in the Hoyok Public Schools. So it was a done deal before they took over.
Any further discussion? Hearing is saying none. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Number twenty-four, what a hard-working committee. The Joint Committee, to whom was referred an order, referred from School Committee, update the purchase of two twenty-five High Street. Recommend that the order has been complied with. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, a motion that the committee report be received and adopted.
Motion made and seconded, the committee report be be adopted under discussion. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, this will be very, very brief because I wanted to keep it brief. We had a brief update, much of what was spoken about already in finance already, and I want to save the thunder and interesting conversation for the twenty-six that's going to be happening in finance. So we encouraged everybody that wanted to discuss further. We're going to have a round two meeting on this topic in finance next week. So looking forward to that discussion. But the committee was briefed by leadership about the two twenty-five High Street proposal.
Okay, does anybody want to add to that? Does everybody know where two twenty-five High Street is located, which is diagonal? Everybody knows that. Okay. Well, very good. On the motion to that the order's been complied with, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay, motions, orders, and resolutions. I'm telling you, we are we're moving. All right, number twenty-five, Councilor Murphy Ramalletti, order that the city council invite the mayor, HPD, and relevant financial department heads to a future meeting of the Finance Committee to provide an update on the status of the off-duty police account and former vendor Off Duty Blue.
Be received and sent to the Finance Committee?
Motion's made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Under discussion? Counselor Jordan?
I will probably have the meeting on April third at six thirty.
Okay, so this one for agenda twenty-five will likely be taken up April third in Finance at six thirty PM. And I would just humbly point out that you read the management letter that we received relative to because it discusses this very order. Okay, on the motion to refer to Finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposite goes to Finance. Number twenty-six, Counselor Vine, order that the Law Department render an opinion as to whether the current CPA ballot question, the Finance Committee reduces a percentage from one-point-five to one, be placed on the November ballot after the city council board A five not to reduce the percentage from one and a half to one. Counselor?
Be received and sent to the to the Law Department?
Motion made and seconded to receive and refer to the Law Department. Counselor Bacon has her hand up. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to understand if this order and the other CPA order will be taken up on the April third meeting.
If I may, I'm not going to take it up until I hear from the Law Department, so it may be April third. It may be later. I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just a just a point of clarification? We're shipping this to Finance.
Law Department.
I'm losing my marbles. We're shipping it to Law Department. Okay, and you want Law Department to get back to us within a specific period of time?
When they're able to.
Okay, when they're when they're able to. All right, because what because we have a we do have a ballot question. I'm going to ask Counsel Attorney Bissonette?
Yes, sir.
Sir, thank you. Would you give us a kind of an ETA as to when you can turn twenty-six around and return it to the city council as a communication?
I believe within thirty days.
Okay.
Thirty days. Okay, so thirty days. That sounds like there is a little potential that you would get it at the April third, but possibly a meeting later in April. Okay, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, but I would remind folks that the clock is ticking, and I would also remind the body that at that meeting, we made a motion to reconsider our action on the vote that is noted in this order, and upon reconsideration that was approved, it was sent back to committee.
Mm-hmm.
So that vote was reconsidered at the meeting and was changed, and then the order was sent back to committee. So I'm not sure what the legal department is going to give an opinion on because we didn't stand on that vote. We reconsidered it and sent the order back to committee.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Vine?
If I recall, it was called- If I recall, it was Counselor Bartley who had motion to take the vote as to whether reduce it from 1.5 to 1%, and it was voted eight to five not to reduce it, and that's why I want the law department to give us an opinion as to whether there's even going to be a ballot question.
Yeah, that's a true statement, but you do recall what she just said, we did reconsider our action and referred it back to finance. So let's just say that. Counselor Vera?
Just for clarification, so if we do reconsider the action, it will be the same process again then? It will still be the two-step process?
I'm going to clarify that. So there was, if you recall, at the meeting, there was a lot of back and forth with the law department. This is never good to have city council subcommittee meetings and full city council, they never work. That's why we sent it back to finance, where hopefully it'll be taken up in short order and where the law department can give us a clear path and clear guidelines to move this along. But I want to recognize Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, just briefly, I just want to remind everybody about, again, tabled items, referred items back that are tabled under the rules. They have to appear on the agenda at future meetings per the discussion we had about a month ago. I just want to, just so we're all on the same page, when we're putting the finance or any committee agenda items, you know, under our rules, those items are supposed to be posted on the agenda as tabled items.
Counselor, yes, so, yeah, Counselor, that's being done. I did speak to administrative assistant about this. There was some comments in the last term from committee chairs that they didn't particularly like it, but now that that's been brought up again, he's reposting them, as far as I can tell, on all the agendas. So I think that's being complied with, and then the body can do what they will in the meetings, okay? All right, so this has been made and seconded to refer to the legal department. Attorney Bissonette gave an ETA of 30 days. Any other discussion? Hearing is saying none on the motion to refer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, I think that was two, nothing, but that's good enough. Okay, 27, order that there be and is hereby appropriated by transfer in the fiscal year '24 $2,457.22 as follows, from firefighters to IOD.
Injured on duty?
Yep.
Suspend the rules and pass the first reading because of the injured on duty?
Motion made and seconded to suspend our rules and pass, suspend our rules to take this up and take final action on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now the motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading, Counselor Devine?
And motion to pass the second reading?
Well, the time offer's four, so we have a motion to, just have a motion to pass the first reading. Do we want to give a little, I mean, I think you gave it to me, Jeff. Okay, Jeff provided me the stats, so for 27, the number of firefighters, IOD, is one. Okay, so that's just for, just for the record. So motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll.
Did you want to take item 28 as a package with that one? Because it's the same thing?
I know, Brenna, just.
Okay, we'll just go with it. Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Brenna, go ahead. You want to call the vote?
Oh, we're doing both at the same time, okay. Devine?
Yes.
No, no, no.
No, we just.
We have to do 21. Oh, I'm sorry, thirteen, zero. Unanimous vote.
Counselor Grady's recognized.
Quickly, through the chair, to revisit item number 26 to ask legal a question, could I like to make a motion that we revisit just to ask legal a question?
Okay, just as a, what's the question, Counselor?
That if we put a petition to the residents of Hoyoke, would it be possible to get the signatures to have that placed on the ballot?
Yeah, I would just say, I'm not going to, I don't think that's an order right now, so I would say my recommendation for that is to file an order for the next, for the next meeting, Counselor, okay? I don't, I don't, I don't think that's an order, besides, that really puts a lot of pressure on the spot on a tough question. Is that okay?
Well, I just want to know if it would be legal.
Well, so there are, there are two procedures to get it on the ballot, and we know that. They're through city council or through a petition drive. Okay, so it is legal to do that, to get on, but I would say, just for your question, be directed right to the law department as an order, or, you know, just send them an email. Usually, they respond pretty fast. Okay, let's see, 28, order that there be and is hereby appropriated by transfer in the fiscal year '24 $30,107.37 as follows, sergeants patrolmen, et cetera, et cetera, to IOD.
Suspend the rules and pass the first reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to take a final action on this. Under discussion, hearing none on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion's now made and seconded to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Jeff provided me, said that there are 11 officers injured on duty, so that's just for your edification, okay? On the motion to pass the first reading, under discussion, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading. Motion made and seconded to pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Grady?
Yep.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you've passed this order. Number 29, order that in accordance with MGL 44, Section 53A, the city council hereby accepts the provisions of the Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development Workplace Safety Grant, 11 grand, no match, well, we like that, grant and authorize the establishment of a fund, that's very important, or other method appropriate for the accounting of the received expenditures associated therewith, and then we, oh, I love this part, Section 2509, grant reporting. Very proud of that order, so.
Be received and sent to the finance committee to be heard on April 3rd.
Look at this, we got dates. Boy, motion's made and seconded to refer to finance. Is there any discussion on this?
Second.
Oh, there's a quick correction, the administrative assistant said it's on tomorrow's agenda.
Okay.
Okay, well, we got a.
So it won't be on April 3rd.
And we're moving even faster. Look at efficiency in government. Whoever thought. On the motion to send it to finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Up it goes to finance. 30.
Mr. President, can we suspend rules and take 29 through 33 because they're all going to finance?
We just did 29, so now we can do 30, is the finance chair okay with that? 30, 31?
Yes, that's fine.
30, 31, 32, and 33. Motion, is that, was that your, is that your motion, Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to suspend our rules and package, take them all up at once, 30, 31, 32, and 33. On the motion to package, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion made and seconded for abbreviated reading. That motion is administratively passed. Number 30, order that MGL 4453 FF23 Mass. Emergency Management EMPG Grant, $12,350, no match. Okay, off to finance. Order that Chapter 4453A, city council hereby accept provisions of Massachusetts Office on Disability, 89, 850, again, no match. 32, order that there be and is hereby appropriate to transfer $21,300 as follows, from our capitalization account to R and M Buildings and Grounds. Number 33, last of the package, order that there be and is hereby appropriate for transfer following in the fiscal year '24, $87,000 from various accounts, from engineer and labor and parks, to professional engineering, streets, refuse OT, city property, parks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The motion's been made to and seconded to send these all to finance. Under discussion, hearing none on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Off they go to finance. Number 34, order that the city council review for approval the FY '24 projects recommended for funding by the Hoyoke CPA Committee, CPAC. Counselor, where would you have this go?
Finance, please.
Motion made and seconded to refer to finance. Under discussion, hearing none on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Off that goes to finance. Now, we did, let's see, I have late file orders and communications, let's see, late file A, order that there be and is hereby appropriated by transfer in FY '24, $60,000 from, whoa, let's see, a whole bunch of sections, no, from mayor contract negotiation, $60,000 to a whole bunch of stuff. The motion would be referred to finance? Motion made and seconded. Motion made and seconded, refer to finance. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Late file B, petition of Haran Karuka, I'm going to be like Kevin, at 263 Handman Street for an out, oh, for an outdoor solar lot. Let's see, that one, I feel like should go to DGR, unless there's somebody who really wants to have this in their hands. Counselor Gibner, you okay taking this up?
Not really.
Well, I appreciate the honesty, but nevertheless, it's going to go to you. So motion's made and seconded to refer this to DGR. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, off she goes to DGR. Late file, late files, late file C, settlement agreement by and between City of Hoyoke and NAGE Clerical Union. That is definitely finance.
Finance.
Okay, so motion made and seconded to ship it off to finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is the end of the line. We'll take one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded, non-debatable. On the motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, and I'm going to take the apple.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good job. Good night.
Good night.